Hello, Goffstown. Welcome to another edition of Goffstown School Board Watch, where public comment is always open. I'm your host, Donna Pennard, and I have the honor to have two guests in the studio with me tonight. One is Richard Gerard, who is host of Gerard at Large, 90.7 FM, WLM...
W.
W.
It's a mouthful. Don't say it ten times fast. WLMW, New Hampshire Family Radio.
WLMW, New Hampshire Family Radio. And also the editor of publication here in town, GoffstownToday.com, Mr. Bill Wynn.
Hello, Donna. Thanks.
And thanks for coming in.
Okay.
We're here because, oh, the drama continues at our last school board meeting of the year, June 18th, unless they call another one, and I would really suggest that they probably should, be calling yet another school board meeting before summer vacation. We had the press there. The union leader was also there. Mr. Wynn set up his cameras in order to discuss, because the MVMS study was going to be discussed, it was on the agenda for that evening, and he had a camera for audio and he had a camera for video.
Yes.
And there was an issue between the chairman, Phil Pankos, and there were words exchanged that were not on camera, asking Mr. Wynn to move his camera. Rich Gerard was there and was a witness to the entire thing and has taken up the cause and had some contact with our local police department, because chairman Phil Pankos did call the police that night. So, in order to make sure that you understand that you have a right to know, that people are trying to get the information out to you, and that roadblocks are being put up all along the way, surprise, surprise, we are here to discuss what happened that night, just in case you didn't get a chance to watch the school board on PegOnDemand.TV. So, let's start with you, Mr. Wynn. Did you set up your camera any place that you hadn't set it up before?
Well, I have to be honest with you, Donna. The answer to that question is no. I came into my usual routine, took one of my cameras, set it up. It was a little bit higher than table length, which I ended up, after chairman asked, said it was being obstructive, but didn't tell me why. So I went out and lowered it, as low as it could go, which was at table height. So, in the setup, nothing changed. Nothing at all. I've been there to film that particular school board meeting setup a number of times in the last several years, and Keith Allard knows it, Stacy Buckley knows it, and other members that had previously been on the board, none of them spoke up when Phil Pankos was being, I'm going to say, somewhat belligerent. And one of the things that I felt, I felt kind of abused, because I don't hear very well. In a setting such as this, I hear fairly good, but put me in a room full of noise, such as that situation, and the system, the air system, I could not hear. And Rich was sitting right next to me, and Rich knows I have very difficult time hearing in situations that aren't completely quiet. So I was dealing with, and I asked him repeatedly, and finally I asked him to come over, and he never came over. He just yelled, not yelled, but in a strained voice, and I never really understood what he said. And I think, Rich, maybe you said, you know, he wants you to move the camera, or something along those lines.
Yeah, I mean, eventually, you know, eventually you were asking him to come over because you were having trouble hearing him, and he was standing where he normally sits at the head of the table.
Yeah.
Arguing with him, "Well, you can hear me because you heard me call you." It really kind of got silly. Finally, he came over. He told Bill that he wanted him to move the camera, because it was an obstruction.
Right.
Bill didn't understand why it was an obstruction. He asked why he wanted it moved, and the chairman, Phil Pankos, basically just, he didn't basically, he said, "Because I asked you to." As if it's, you know, "I said so, and therefore," and that was his response. So after, you know, Bill told him that he wasn't going to move the camera, they both called the police. Cell phones came out, they called the police, and then Bill went and he lowered his camera, because it was maybe four, four to six inches above the table height, but then he lowered it so that it was at or below the table height, so whatever obstruction of the view there may have been, because of where the camera was originally located, was now completely gone. And so, then the police showed up, and the next thing I know, officer talks to Pankos, must have spoken to Bill afterward in the hallway, because he had left the room when the police came.
And they wouldn't let me back in.
Then I saw Bill pick up the cameras and leave, and then following that, I went to talk to the police about what was going on and why, because I am a member of the media, and I was there specifically because of the issues that I've been covering on my show about Mountain View Middle School, and what I believe to be an illegal process to select a consultant, one that does not conform. I've got more than 20 years of experience in government and media in the city of Manchester. I was an elected official, was the first elected alderman at large, I ran for mayor, I served under Mayor Ray Wazorek for six years. I think I still am the longest consecutive serving mayor's aide in the history of the city. So, right-to-know issues, bidding processes, all of that stuff, and also as a member of the media for various news publications, including my own show now. Your school board does not operate by any norm that I understand in terms of how it handles right-to-know issues, non-public sessions, the public bidding process. Anyway, I was there to see what the outcome of the MVMS study was, and that took a bizarre turn. So that's why I was there, and that's what I was witnessing, and it was all very upsetting to me.
Do you mind my asking you?
Oh, no.
Okay, so, the police are called, you are now, you called the police, chairman Pankos calls the police. I saw the, by the way, I was there that night at the school board meeting, so I did actually see it all happen. Mr. Pankos did start by yelling from across the room at the head table. He refused to move and walked across the room. Eventually, he did, but he wanted to continue to argue, so, Mr. Pankos, I'm just saying, you know, as a mother of three adult children, you don't yell from across the room. As a teacher, don't yell from across the room. Just walk on over. It doesn't hurt you. You can just walk.
They didn't have to create a scene.
You didn't have to create a scene. You wanted to create a scene, and that's how it started. So, you left the room, you're calling the police, but you're outside of the room. So I did not, what conversation happened between you and the police when you were outside the room?
What it started out as is that he asked me, he said, "I understand your cameras, particularly one camera, is obstructive, and the chairman asked you to move it, and you refused to move it." And I said, "What I did do is I wanted to know why the camera had to be moved, but I never really had that opportunity." But I said, "I can't move it, because it's there for two reasons. It's there, one, to pick up audio. It's not there for video, although I could use that video portion if the chairman and superintendent are having a conversation, I may clip into that, okay? And I always have, you know, I usually have a banner at the table height, so I don't look at people's ankles or knees and stuff, I don't care about that. I'm just concerned in what they're hearing. So that is the cam for audio, and that's what it's there primarily for. In my experience in that room, I explained to the policeman that it's always been there. It needs to be there for the audio purpose. No one's ever complained about it, and I need to know what the objection, what's the obstruction? I need to know what that is. This is where the cartwheels start.
Right.
Okay? So, I explained to the police officers that I need to know why. What is the obstruction? And the response to that was, "I'm here to keep the peace. You either have to move the camera, or leave the building. And if you don't leave the building, we'll escort you out the building." Okay? And I explained to the police officer that that is not an option, because, again, this is why it's there. And finally, it got down to the point where I'm wasting my time. This police officer is not going to protect my civil liberty, civil liberty rights under the First Amendment. I'm in a quandary where I have no alternative now, because I have a government official who gets paid with my tax dollars telling me I have to get the heck out of the building. And the reason I have to get the heck out of the building is because we can't tell you why, but you need to leave.
Now, the argument could be made that if you had video, but you didn't have very good audio, that would be a problem? Or if you had sat through the meeting and taken notes, that that would not have created the kind of coverage that you were looking for?
Well, I explained to them that I have a disability, okay? I cannot write, okay? I can barely sign my name. The people at the bank fill out my checks for me, and I try to put a signature on them. So I explained that to him, because he says, "Why don't you just write things down and not do your camera?" I says, "No, because my publication's known for doing videos, and I do that because I can't write." Okay? And so, he said, "Well, I don't know what else to tell you. You're gonna have to move your cameras, or leave the building." So here it goes again.
Right.
So I realized that at this point, I'm wasting my time, and I'm not getting any help from this police officer. So, without even...
He escorted you back into the room?
No.
I saw you come into the room.
No, he did not escort me back in. I just turned around and I told him, I says, "Look, we're wasting our time." I said, "I'm leaving, because I have no alternative." And I turned around and went and got my cameras.
And I do believe the officer's name was Pennard, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Just letting you know, there's no relation there. I'm not related to any other Pennards other than my parents. They're the only Pennards in the state in New Hampshire I'm related to.
Right.
So, there was no relation there with Officer Pennard.
Right.
So you came in, you got your cameras, so this is where I picked up witnessing it again, was here comes Bill Wynn...
What's he gonna do?
Grabbing his cameras, and you left.
And I left, and I left, and not realizing it, you know, I was a bit nervous, getting beat up on, my constitutional rights are being stripped away from me by a policeman at the orders of a chairman of the school board, in a public facility where I have every right to be where I've been and can't be there today for some reason.
And inadvertently, your camera, as you were exiting, was still running?
Yes, it was still running, bit nervous, didn't know it was running. So, I had one here and one with the legs open, and I'm walking out the building, and I get out to the sidewalk, and I realize, "Oh, that camera's running." As I'm putting it down, so I shut it off, okay? Not realizing that what I was holding was still running. I didn't have any intentions of filming as I exited, but I did, okay? Come to find out...
And you posted that, correct?
Yes, I did. It's on YouTube, and it's on my publication.
Okay, so if anybody wants to see that video...
They can go to GoffstownToday.com and scroll down for the article, clip to the full story page, and everything's there. So, in any event, the conversation, I was very, very upset, and I realized how upset I was after. I didn't look at the video for a day and a half, and I finally looked at it, went on and said, "Wow, that was one upset Bill Wynn." You know, I'm not an upset person, I like to stay calm. And then I suddenly realized that the police department's taking part in this issue. They're helping the chairman restrict my freedom, all right? Because they never answered the question, and if you look at the video, they never answered the question. And the question is, what is the obstruction?
Correct.
No answer.
And I just want to let you know, I've watched the video...
Yeah.
And I thought you were rather calm.
Oh, boy.
I guess you thought you were upset, but I was like, "Wow, you know, kind of kept it cool. You weren't belligerent with them, you weren't even blaming them for the situation."
No.
It showed that you were on your way out, because you didn't have any audio, and that was what was important to you.
Mm-hmm.
Well, not having, not allowing the camera to be in a place where the audio can be picked up is tantamount to not allowing the camera to be there at all.
Yeah.
After Bill left, I went out to the hallway, somewhat concerned about what was going on. I found Officer Pennard. I introduced myself as a member of the media, that I had a radio show, and I asked him what the problem was. And basically, he told me what is in the police report, which was, "Well, the chairman owns the room," is exactly what he said. He said, "The chairman owns the room, and what the chairman..."
I got that.
"...you know, the chairman, what the chairman wants is what we're here to enforce." I said, "Well, what was the problem?" He said, "Well, the chairman said that the camera was in the way." I said, "You saw where the camera was. How was the camera obstructing the conduct of the meeting? How was it a distraction?" He said, "It doesn't make any noise, it doesn't flash any lights, it isn't in the line of sight, it isn't restricting anybody's movement." Said, "How is that camera a distraction that needs to be taken care of?" And he said, "I'm not talking to you anymore." He got very upset, he turned around and he walked out. I thought I might be, you know, I thought I might be unwillingly brought with him.
You were next.
But even if you read the police report, he just, he says it right here. I then explained to Mr. Wynn that Mr. Pankos was the moderator for the meeting, and that he was in charge of the meeting. I explained to Mr. Wynn that if Mr. Pankos wanted the camera moved, then Mr. Wynn needed to move it. Well, I, because I asked him, I said, "Well, under what authority are you, as a police officer, removing a member of the media, or telling him his cameras have to be in a certain place?" And he said, "The chairman owns the room." All right, well, after that, I became somewhat concerned, because if the chairman owns the room and can determine what is and is not a distraction, and somebody like me, sitting relatively close to the table with a laptop that has a fan, and they aren't quiet, you know, when you're typing to take notes, that makes noise, what's next? My typing is too loud, and I can be moved to the back of the room so that my typing can't be heard, but I can't type because I can't hear? See, part of the problem is, they don't have, like in Manchester, sound systems in the room where the public can actually hear...
Correct.
...what's going on.
The audio in that room is horrible.
And in fact, the noise level was so high, about 20 minutes into the meeting, they had to shut off the air handle system, because they couldn't even hear themselves around the table.
That's what I understood.
So, where the camera's gonna pick up?
I think Diane McCarthy was cold, and that was another reason why they shut it. The queen was cold.
So, I called Chief Sullivan the next day, and I introduced myself, that I was present at the incident, and then I had an interaction with his officer, and I asked him, he was, I have never spoken to Chief Sullivan before, so I don't know if this was any different than his normal manner, but Chief Sullivan was, seemed annoyed by the phone call. He, you know, he was aware of the incident, but hadn't had a chance to review the reports, and I was pretty straightforward with him. I said, "I want to know by what authority the police ordered a member of the media to either move their cameras, or be removed from the premises." So that's a pretty extreme case. "Well, if the chairman wants them moved, the chairman wants them moved." But he said, "I hadn't read the report." I told him, I told him what I saw what happened, I told him about my interaction with Officer Pennard, and how it left me feeling rather unsettled, and he said he would read the reports. I said, "Great." I said, "When would you like me to call you back?" He said, "Well, call me back." I said, "Great." Well, when should I call back? Because I want to make sure you've had a chance to read the reports. He said, "Well, later today." Because I called him right after my show, which runs from 6:00 to 9:00 in the morning, Monday through Friday. So I called him the next morning after the show, based on what he told me, and he said, "The law gave the chairman the authority to do what he did."
And then he quoted a certain law?
Well, I asked him, I never take that for granted, because our C-91A, which is New Hampshire's... See, you have to understand something. The New Hampshire Constitution says this, under Part 1, Article 8, quote, "All power residing originally in and being derived from the people. All magistrates and officers of government are their substitutes and agents, and at all times accountable to them. Government therefore should be open, accessible, accountable, and responsive to that end. The public's right of access to governmental proceedings and records shall not be unreasonably restricted." Now, from that constitutional article follows the New Hampshire Right-to-Know Law. So, when I asked, when I challenged the chief, and I said, "What law gives the chairman the authority to do that?" And I explained to him, not only was I a member of the media, and had been for a number of years, but that I was an elected official in Manchester and an aide to the mayor of Manchester, and was very well-versed in what boards could and could not do under the Right-to-Know Law.
Right.
He referred me to two Supreme Court cases in the state of New Hampshire. One was WMUR Channel 9 versus New Hampshire Department of Fish and Game, okay? I'm gonna send you a link, but you can actually Google it, or I used Yahoo search. You can actually search WMUR versus New Hampshire Department of Fish and Game. You'll find the court case. It was settled in 2006. So I read this, and I called the chief back, and I said, "Chief, I just read the WMUR thing."
Right.
And I had a very animated discussion with the chief, by the way, that morning before you gave me these cases, during the conversation that you gave me the cases. And I said, "How, I said, 'Did you read this?'" He said, "Yeah, I did." I said, "I don't think so, because this case actually said that WMUR's rights under Right-to-Know were violated, and that the chairman of the Fish and Game Board should have allowed their cameras in."
Right.
Now, the chairman of the Fish and Game Board basically wanted to ban the cameras because the fellow, John Hardwick, who was coming before them, was asking for a hunting license, but 10 years, 11 years prior to that, he had shot and killed somebody while deer hunting. So he had to go through this whole process, apparently extremely shy kind of guy, wouldn't come forward to testify if there were cameras in the room. So the chairman tried to use their administrative rules and to try to balance the Right-to-Know by allowing a reporter in without a camera, against this man's shyness.
Okay.
And the court found that he was wrong to do that, and that the Right-to-Know statute reigned supreme over their statutes and everything else. The only thing that the court found in favor of the Fish and Game Department was that the chairman, in trying to balance things, could not have known and seemed confused about the provisions of Right-to-Know, and therefore, because it wasn't a willful violation, WMUR was not entitled to have its attorneys' fees and court costs reimbursed by the state.
Okay.
But both the trial court and the Supreme Court found that the Right-to-Know by the prohibition of the camera was violated.
Okay.
Okay? The other, and then the chief said, "Did you read State v. Dominic?" I said, "No, I didn't." I said, "Number one, I didn't write it down, I didn't remember it, and you hung up on me too quickly for me to get to it." I said, "But at best now, chief, you're going to have given me a second Supreme Court case, one that may support what you and your, what your department did, and one that clearly does not."
Okay.
All right? So then I read State v. Dominic, and it was a case that was settled in July of 1977 in the New Hampshire Supreme Court. And there was a selectman named John Dominic in the town of Belmont, who apparently wasn't behaving himself at a meeting. For those of you who watch Manchester Community Television or the Manchester Board of Aldermen, think Joel Kelly-Levastre, the alderman at large, okay? Who twice in two weeks was so rowdy that the mayor gabbled the meeting to recess to try to settle it down, okay? We're talking screaming matches. Well, apparently, this selectman in the town of Belmont was not, was not following the directions of the chair. He was interrupting the proceedings repeatedly and routinely, and it got to such a point that he was told by the chairman, if he didn't cease and desist, he would be ordered out of the room, okay? The court found that he did purposely cause public inconvenience, annoyance, or alarm. Here's what the court wrote. "The court found that the, quote, 'disorder at the selectmen's meeting became so great that the board ceased to be a deliberative body and could not, at that time, perform its proper function of a consideration of the affairs of the town. The court considered the chairman's action in ordering the defendant out of the room to be within his authority as chairman, seeking to conduct an orderly meeting. The court further found that, quote, 'when the defendant refuses to leave and continued to deny the authority of the chairman, he was, the latter was left no reasonable alternative than to seek that police assistance for the removal.'" So it said, "The chairman had the responsibility of conducting a meeting in an orderly manner. The defendant was not allowing that to take place, and therefore, it was proper to have him removed." Which all gets back to Chairman Pankos and the police.
Right.
Pankos saying, "The camera is a distraction," and the police failing. And I'm gonna tell you something that your police chief said to me, that you should find alarming. But the police failing to cause the chairman to define or specifically cite what was distracting about the placement of the camera. Now, in my conversation with your police chief, what I said to him in summary of position was this. So what you're telling me is, that your officers do not exercise any objective or objective independent discretion in these situations. If the chairman says so, you are there, like your officer told me, to do what the chairman directs. And he said, "We are there to do what the chairman directs." So your police chief has admitted that when it comes to these situations, they do no independent assessment. It was a very simple question, all Officer Pennard had to do, and if Officer Pennard was uncertain of what to do in a small town like this, I'm sure he knows how to get a hold of the chief.
Right.
Okay? But all he had to do was ask, which his own police report does not even say that he, it does not indicate that he did. "Mr. Chairman, what is distracting about the camera being placed where it is?"
Right. They weren't going to look into it, they weren't going to...
Okay?
Right.
So, in the town of Goffstown, apparently, your chairman of your Board of School Committee, your Board of Selectmen, your planning boards or whatnot, apparently they have the authority to order the police to use their authority to control the room in the complete absence of any disruption of order. I find that alarming. Not only do I find that alarming, I find it to be, so the two, now, your chief told me that because of my phone call to him on Tuesday morning, the first phone call I made, "Oh, I've talked to people at the Board of Selectmen, we've talked to town council, these are the two governing statutes in this case." Okay, I will grant that the chairman has the authority to order the police department to keep and maintain order.
Right.
To remove someone who is preventing the orderly conduct of the meeting and therefore interfering with the conduct of the board's business.
So it becomes a matter of definition of terms.
That's right. So that was not the case here, and the other one that the chief sent me clearly shows that the Fish and, the Department of Fish and Game violated the media's rights by prohibiting the use of cameras.
Right.
Now, they're gonna say, and they'd be right, on one level, that Bill Wynn was not told that he could not have his cameras there. But the contrary argument to that is, if the cameras cannot pick, I said this to the chief, I said, "Chief, I said, 'What is the difference between ordering the camera out of the room and putting it in a place where it cannot record the sound?'"
Right.
I said, "You know, silent movies went out 100 years ago." And you know what he said to me? He said, "Well, but they were pretty effective, weren't they?"
Imagine that.
And I just looked at, I just, I didn't know what to say. I said, "Chief, if you think a three-hour school board meeting with no or poor quality audio is going to be effective..."
No.
"...then you have a far more vivid imagination than I do, but what is the point of a meeting that doesn't have any audio?"
Right, exactly.
I think at this point, I mean...
Especially since silent movies were made for entertainment, and they actually did some moving around. I don't think our school board members are very entertaining as they sit there.
No, they're not.
So, even the court cases that they cited to me did not, do not, in my never-to-be-humble opinion, I'm not an attorney, but from time to time I play one on the radio.
Yeah.
Right.
And, but this, I think it's important to note the larger context. This is all coming on the heels of reporting that I have done.
Correct. Reporting that they don't want.
Reporting that I have done.
On the Mountain View Middle School.
On the Mountain View Middle School. It's all a big secret, the media has it all wrong, it's all perception, the people have it...
Well, I will say this, I think there's a certain newspaper in town that's paying attention to one facet of what's happening, but is not paying attention to the whole picture. I mean, at the crux of the matter here is, you have a superintendent soliciting bids without the, without the authority of the school board, without the approval of a request for proposal.
Right.
In a closed process, we don't know that the qualifications being sought, we don't know the terms being defined, we don't know what's being solicited of each bidder.
And according to her at the last meeting, she doesn't either, because they tried to get a rubric together and they just couldn't come to a consensus.
Right.
So now, we're going to get a rubric.
And if they were going to make the award, if they were going to award the bid, the public, because it was never publicly posted, it was Keith Allard, said, "Well, you know, that kind of stuff doesn't, you know, people don't read..." No, but the public reads the newspaper, so it understands what's going on, and there is some criterion upon which an award is going to be made. But what they did tell us, interestingly, now Stacy Buckley says, because I made a Right-to-Know request, and she's about to get another one, but I made a Right-to-Know request, I wanted to, I wanted to have their bids. She said, "Well, you can't have it, that's, it's all under negotiation." So, "Wait a minute, you've disclosed the bidder, and you've disclosed the cost that's associated with the bid, it's no longer..." It's no longer --
Only the three that she contacted, though.
Right.
Not the three that have come forward since then, since it's become public.
Well, and all by arbitrary deadlines, all with arbitrary -- who knows if the same information was requested of all of the people --
Making it up as they go along.
And there's no defined timeline. There has to be, in a proper request-for-proposal process, a defined timeline. There have to be specifications, qualifications, and timelines.
But she's going to say, "Oh, I was just looking into it. I was going to sugge -- I wasn't going to do a formal request. I was just, like, looking into it." So I would say that the three companies that she contacted should be eliminated. They shouldn't even be a part of the process. We should probably only be looking at the three that have come forward since it became public. That the other three companies shouldn't even be in the running.
And then you have the whole question of Diane McCarthy participating at all. I have an email from Diane saying that, and I believe a school more following my interaction with her, that she announced that she would no longer participate in any of the deliberations regarding the Mountain View Middle School matter. But lo and behold, there came a vote that was requested by the school board, by the superintendent to, you know, gee, I didn't realize it was going to be all this controversy. Do you want to proceed? And on a four to three vote with one abstention.
She's the deciding vote.
She's the deciding vote to proceed. So she may not, in fact, cast a vote in the final award, but if you ca -- if you do everything you need to do up until that point, and you're only going to withhold at the very end, you've set the conditions for your employer to potentially be chosen, and you continue in complete bold violation of the school board's own conflict of interest and ethics policies.
That's right.
The very same ethics policy they criticized --
And she was criticizing, yes.
Yeah, you know, committee, uh, committee --
Dan Cloutier.
Dan Cloutier for being unwilling to sign.
How do you spell hypocrisy? Let's define our terms.
Yeah, I think, I, you know, clearly, she should, under the conflict of interest policy, have declared that she works for one of the bidders.
Right.
She should have removed herself from the table, and she should have never cast any vote, or been any part, by their own rules.
Correct.
By their own policy. So, you know, that's the broader context against what this is taking place.
But she's the queen. See, that's the, that's one of the things, is that policies and procedures in this district are applied only as they want them to be applied, and they're disregarded when it's not convenient for them.
Right.
But if you're an employee in this district who's trying to use policies, and it's like, it's like trying to walk on quicksand, because everything just changes, and we equivocate on everything, and no one defines terms, and words mean different things to them than it means to us. So you end up having, you can't even, you're not even speaking the same language, so you can't communicate.
You've got this one item on that agenda from the 18th that says, "Non-public session, RSA 91A colon 3, Section 2." Okay?
Right.
I have that law here. I don't believe that it is proper to do this, because the law specifically states, "Any motion to enter non-public session shall state on its face the specific exemption under Paragraph 2, which is relied upon as the foundation for the non-public session." There are eight of them.
Correct. You have to pick one.
A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H. There are, there are eight of them. You not only have to pick one, you have to, you have to be specific within the one that you pick. Now, here's what I've noticed in reviewing minutes and whatnot associated with Mountain View Middle School. When they go into non-public session, they do not take a roll-call vote.
Correct.
They are supposed to, under the law, take a roll-call vote. I mean, the vote of any such motion shall be roll-call and shall require affirmative vote of the majority of members. Now, what a roll-call is, for those of you who don't know, it's not all in favor, say aye, or raise your hand. It is the clerk of the board calls each board member's name. Chairman Pankost, yes. Vice Chairman McCarthy, no. You know, Member Cloutier, no. Whatever it is.
Right.
And they physically, with their name called, have to be recorded as voting yes or no. You don't do that in Goffstown.
They never do that.
And that's a clear violation of the law, which says it shall be by roll-call.
Let me ask you a question, Rich, if I could interrupt, just for grins. Are those non-publics legal?
Well, if they're called properly, they are. If they're not called properly, then they're open, the body is open to liability and is open to overturning, and the body is liable to pay the fees and potentially other damages associated with those who bring an action.
So if a 91A was requested for the release of those not lawful non-publics, where do you think that would go?
Well, here's the other thing. I don't know.
I'm sure you hadn't, you know, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I'm just having that thought.
The other thing that I've noticed is that you all seem to be in the habit of sealing your non-public minutes.
Yes. Well, I mean, everything's a big secret, you know.
Well, I think it might do your viewers well to know a couple of things. First of all, there are eight, there are eight reasons that you can go into non-public. And if you spell one out, you may only talk about that in non-public. It's very clear in the law. "Only the following matters shall be considered or acted on in non-public session. Dismissal, promotion, or compensation of a public employee, or the disciplining of such employee, or the investigation of any charges against him or her, unless the employee affected, one, has the right to a meeting, and, two, requests that the meeting be open, in which case the request shall be granted." Okay? "The hiring of any person or public employee. Matters which have discussed public, in the public, would likely affect, likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the public body itself, unless such person requests it to be open. Consideration of the acquisition or sale or lease of real property. Consideration of negotiation or pending claims of litigation. Consideration of applications by adult parole board. Consideration of security-related issues, or the immediate safety and security of personnel or inmates at the county correctional facilities." Doesn't apply here.
Some people would debate that, but --
"Consideration of the applications by the Business Finance Authority under certain..." Okay, so they're very specific criterion that you go into. By the way, once you take an action in non-public, say to ratify a contract, I know that was a --
Right, that was an issue.
Once the contract is ratified, but not whether it --
It's public.
You don't come out and say, "Okay, we ratify the motion that we did in non-public and then seal the minutes."
Correct.
Here is what the law says about the minutes. Okay, you ready for this? Indulge me for a minute. I promise I'll make it interesting. "Minutes of meetings in non-public session shall be kept, and a record of all actions shall be promptly made available for public inspection, except as provided in this section. Minutes and decisions reached in non-public session shall publicly, shall be publicly disclosed within 72 hours of the meeting, unless by recorded vote," that's that roll-call thing again, "of two-thirds of the members present, it is determined that divulgence of the information," get this, "would likely would affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the public body itself, or render the proposed action ineffective, or pertain to terrorism, more specifically to matters relating to the preparation for and the carrying out of all emergency functions developed by local or state officials that are directly intended to thwart a deliberate act that is intended to result in widespread or severe damage to property, or widespread injury or loss of life." Those are the, those are the only reasons why minutes of non-public sessions may be sealed.
And they seal them all the time.
It is. And I'll tell you something. There was just a case in Wilton that I believe went to the Supreme Court, where the, where the school committee in Wilton, it was either the school committee or selectmen, one of the two, were challenged on the sealing of minutes, having to do with an employee that was misusing town credit cards.
Yes.
And the Supreme Court said, "Oh, no, you don't. That is not subject to these provisions here. You don't protect the reputation of somebody who did wrong."
Correct.
It doesn't, it doesn't do that. And so the town of Goffstown, the school district in Goffstown, I think is at great jeopardy. I have been contacted by one particular right-to-know advocate in the state, who herself has never lost a right-to-know case in the state of New Hampshire. She's 16 and zero, who is really very interested, and as a matter of fact, sent me an email today asking me if I wanted to proceed with a case against the school district. Now, I'll tell you what I'm going to do. I'm going to reorganize what I've asked Superintendent Buckley and Chairman Pankost and Vice Chairman McCarthy. I'm going to reorganize it, because her responses to my inquiries have been half-assed at best, to be perfectly candid with you. And the last one I got from her, she is of the opinion that she's answered everything. So I'm going to go through, and I'm going to reformulate everything that has been asked, everything that hasn't been answered, and I'm going to give her one final shot to come up with it. And Chairman Pankost and Vice Chairman McCarthy, because as far as I'm concerned, this all has to do with Mountain View Middle School.
Correct.
That's what I'm looking at.
Right.
And expect answers. If not, then I very well may bring an action in court to get those minutes unsealed and to get that information. What I have been able to establish, though, is that there was no formal, there is no RFP. I asked for the RFP on the consulting study. It doesn't exist. So how can you be awarding services that don't have criterion? You cannot do that in the public realm.
Well, Rich, they ordered, they published, they published that they needed fuel oil. Okay?
Yeah, well, treating it as a commodity, not a service. And they seem to think there's a distinction there, but there really isn't. And now, now, your police chief is of the opinion that if the chairman says it's a distraction, then it's a distraction, and they own the room, according to the chairman, according to the police chief. So now, you have those of us in the media who are clearly making an irritant of ourselves by taking these issues on and trying to get the answers.
Unlike the local paper.
Okay? You know, taking these issues on and trying to get the answers
For the people.
On the threat of potentially being declared a distraction by the chairman of the school board, and then hauled out of the room by the police.
Correct.
And I'm sorry, folks, if you don't think that that's really a relevant issue, then you have to ask yourself, you know, is it such a surprise that people like Eric Holder think they can get away with flouting the law?
Right.
You know, if people at a local level don't demand that their local officials are following the law, providing them access to every citizen, not, you know, especially the media to their materials, I don't understand. You folks must pay for school district counsel. I don't understand. You must have legal counsel. I don't understand how this can happen.
Oh, yes, there's legal counsel there. We pay a lot of money, because there's plenty of grievances and lawsuits.
Chief Sullivan didn't hesitate to go to the legal counsel on this issue.
Well, yeah, and Chief Sullivan probably didn't really put them up to speed on what happened, because Chief, now, I asked Chief Sullivan in the conversation before I got a hold of police report. I said, "So Chief, what was the, what was the chairman's, you know, response to, what was his, how did he define a camera that wasn't blocking anybody, restricting anybody's movement
Right.
in anybody's line of sight, was not making any noise, was not flashing any lights, and was in no way obtrusive to the, obstructive to the, to the conduct of the meeting?"
And had to be where it was in order to pick up the low voices. I mean, these people talk really low. So unless you're at home watching on GTV.
Well, they talk in a normal voice.
They don't, I mean, they're, they're normal voices, and
Right.
And the majority of them talk low.
Yeah. So I said to the, I said to him, "What was, what was the response of the chairman to the question, how did he define it as a distraction?" He said, "Well, I don't have the report in front of me. I can't remember what he may have, may not have said." And I said, "With all due respect, Chief, I say, you know what? Knowing that I called yesterday, and I was going to call back again today on this topic, I would think that, A, you would have the report in front of you, and B, even if you didn't, that being the salient point, you know, the whole crux of the matter, what constitutes a distraction for the purposes of involving the police, I would think you would have remembered it." At that point, he hung up on me.
Oh.
Imagine that.
So the police chief did hang up on me.
And I'm waiting for a response to an email.
I'm waiting for a response to three of them.
Well, you have three emails. I'm waiting for a response to just one email, which I'm going to ask him tomorrow via an email, just because I got to get it on the record.
Yes, him being the --
Chief Sullivan.
Chief Sullivan, yeah.
I've seen three demanding to know the authority. He says it's this. What he sent me does not give them the authority to do what they did, and if it does, we're all in trouble.
And the, and the incident report that was made up, I advised the chief that I, you know, it just doesn't look right. There's things that may or may not be stated here. So then he turned around and said, "Well, I don't like what you have on your publication, because that's not right." And I said, "What do you mean?" He says, "Well, come over here, and I'll show you." I said, "No, just tell me." He says, "Well, you have a statement on the homepage of your publication about what is going on and what you're going to write about it, and that's not right, what you're saying." I said, "I'll tell you what I'll do, Chief. I'll go home and look at it, and if it's not right, I'll change it." I went home and looked at it. There is absolutely nothing wrong. It's the truth. It's the way it was coming down, and that's how it's reported." So it's, I just, I just find it mind-boggling. So I just want to put everybody on notice that in the next school board meeting, I'm coming back.
Which is August, unless they call another one. It will be in August.
I'm going to put my camera exactly where it was before. I'm going to put my second camera for the video portion exactly where it was before.
Right.
And --
Which you didn't have any complaint about, by the way.
Which I haven't had complaints about for years, and same members in the room. And I'm not going to move them. So they're going to have to either arrest me or physically remove me from the building. That's next.
So I think I should probably bring my own video camera to record it.
Well, you can. But in order for them to arrest me, they're going to have to come up with something that I violated.
Right.
I rest my story right there until that day.
And if Chairman Pankost wants to admit that he doesn't know the law, didn't realize that he wasn't, you know, controlling the room, and that he's made a mistake, your apology will be accepted.
Of course.
You know, by all means, please bring one forward.
And just because we're not as nice and easy on Mountain View Middle School matters, and now the Goffstown Police, and things that we feel we are telling the public about, and other media outlets either don't print anything, or don't cover it, they just gloss it over.
Right.
That is what I feel is the basis for being asked to get this guy out of the building.
Yes, yes.
Because we --
Because they are not happy with it coming.
And when both Rich and I showed up, I think they might have imploded.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know anything about, you know, I get all I can do to handle, you know, while I cover what happens in the surrounding towns.
Cover everything else.
I'm a Manchester kid.
Right.
And, you know, I know all of the personal, personality dynamic. I don't claim to know what's going on here.
Right.
You know, I don't know the relationships, who's in whose camp, or anything else, but it's clear to me that if the chairman of the school board thought that Bill were a favorably disposed media outlet.
There would not have been a problem.
There would not have been a problem. And again, the whole question is, it's a disturbance, it's an obstruction, it's a distraction. Maybe what I should do when I show up at the next school board meeting is I should walk in with a big red nose, white paint on my face, a clown hat, big red shoes.
And watch me get carried out.
And let me, and let me be physically, in my appearance, a distraction, and see what happens. Because if, if in fact, a camera placed out of the line of sight, out of the way of traffic, without making any noise, or flashing any lights, or otherwise being disruptive, if that is a distraction, the law does not provide that the chairman can control distractions. The law provides that the chairman has the authority to conduct an orderly meeting, and to that end, it seems to me, Chief Sullivan, that you and your police officers need to determine what is in fact disruptive to the orderly conduct of the meeting by the placement of a camera. And in the absence of that, Chief Sullivan, you are not constrained to act on the orders of a chairman whose primary goal may very well be to restrict the access of any citizen, especially one there serving the media. If you read the court cases that you sent me, you would know it had to do with the orderly conduct of the meeting, and that is the seminal question, which I threw at the chief, and that is this: How is the placement of the camera interfering with that? And because the chairman said so is not an answer, any more than when my mother said, "Because I'm your mother, that's why," was an answer when I was a kid, and just wanted to know why.
Right.
And this is very upsetting stuff. This is the kind of thing that happens in state-controlled media.
Yeah.
This is the kind of thing that happens.
It's not the United States of America, and it's not what we want in Goffstown. So please, I beg of you, citizens of Goffstown, especially for the portion of you that vote, please let your voices be heard, because you have a right to know these things. People who are trying to find these, find these things out and report them to you are being inhibited by people who want to play word games and change --
We're not being inhibited. We're being threatened with, by the force of the law.
We're being threatened. And in an email to someone in New York City just the other day, it said, "And my PS, live free or die in New Hampshire no more. Socialism has arrived at the local level."
I mean, Politburo is trying to control that access.
Ah, the Politburo, the P-word.
But the, the, Part 1, Article 8 of the New Hampshire Constitution.
Ah, yes.